At this time, we start our Suffolk City Council work session and our first topic is broadband[455.69][455.69]initiatives update. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. This afternoon's presentation will update City Council and our residents on the city's In Spectrum charters broadband initiatives within the city of Suffolk. It will include great news regarding funding and the city's goal of universal broadband coverage. The presentation will include, or start with, excuse me, with the interim Director of Information Technology Regina Chandler, who will be discussing our Vatti grant, our recent Vatti grant application. It'll be followed by Mr. Eric Collins of Spectrum on the CARES Act and Ardorff project schedules, and then followed by Rand, uh, Rand, excuse me, Rand Gaitan from my office on our city's broadband website. Rand, I apologize for that. Regina?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, City Manager, and staff. Wanted to bring you some good news. The Suffolk Broadband Expansion Initiative, Governor Northam announced on Monday, December 13th, that the city of Suffolk, regional application was selected for the funding. After three years of hard work, we finally made it. This is entailing 2,285 passings, and upon conclusion of this project, the city of Suffolk will obtain universal service.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, with that, I'd like to send appreciation to both Regina, Rand, on their efforts along with our neighbors with Spectrum or colleagues with Spectrum on that effort to get that application in and approved. That's, I think it's $21.9 million grant.
Thanks. Al, it's very good to be with you again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. I think three months ago, I had shared with you that I would love to come back and do updates, so we'll give you updates on Charter's commitment for broadband throughout the county. And fortunately, on Monday, as Regina said, we received that great announcement from the mayor. So there's a three-phase approach in getting to universal service for all residents in the county. The first phase was hoping and praying that we received a Vatti grant. There's a second phase to that, which is the CARES project that we partnered with the city. And that CARES project was looking at 357 addresses that we looked at and felt like using CARES funds that we could partner with the county to get broadband service to these localities. So happy not only to update you on not only the Vatti, but also on CARES. This week, we will be completing that project. And so that's an additional 357 households that's going to be receiving broadband in the rural areas of Suffolk. The third, and let me go to this slide right here. Of those 357 addresses within, on the county map, you can see exactly where those 357 addresses are located. The City Manager has this map, so later, if you would like to take a look and look at those areas, you'll be able to. Onto the next slide. The third area we're looking at is what we call the Ardorff, which we talked about extensively at the last meeting. In the Ardorff phase, the Ardorff phase is the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund that Charter won through the FCC reverse auction. There are 1,759 locations in the green area within the boundaries of the city. So within those bounded areas, if we look at where we won Ardorff, and if you look at where our current existing footprint is, and then you look at the CARES project that we've put together, and then you combine that with the Vatti grant, I'll show you how we come to universal service. With me today is our construction manager, not only for the Vatti, for the CARES, but also for the Ardorff area, is Mike French. He is the construction manager for Charter Communications. He handles North Carolina, Virginia, South Carolina, and Maryland. So he has a pretty large territory and he has a huge task at hand. But he really, his team really put the boots to the ground by a commitment to get this CARES project completed within a very short timeframe. And he was able to do that, and so we're looking, as I said earlier, that's going to happen this week. Now, in our Ardorff, what we're looking for, and one of the questions I had before when I spoke with you, one of the questions was, when are you going to begin this? So I'm happy to announce to you, back then, when I first met, three months ago, we did not have a timeframe when we were going to start. We had a hopeful timeframe, but we wasn't sure. So what Mike's team is doing is they have almost completed half the walkout for Ardorff. The walkout is where team members go out, and they count every pole, they count every household, they count every location where otherwise we need to go underground, we need to go aerial, where a power supply should be, or vault, whatever the equipment is, they determine where it's going to go through that walkout. And from that walkout is where the design is scoped from, from his team. It's the design team, they design, and then we put together whatever schedule we have and what's going to take. With Mike's help, we were able to safely say that we're going to begin in January with some shovels in the ground in our Ardorff area. So we're going to actually have two different areas that we're going to be working on. We're going to have, effectively, working on Ardorff, and then we're going to be working towards a contract with DHCD through the Vatti grant, Vatti award, to determine, you know, what timeframe we have within that contract that we're going to have to complete the Vatti grant. So if you put all those together, we're going to end up speeding the process to get universal service for the city of Suffolk. If you go to the next slide, you take a look at, I know it looks like the same slide, but it's, there's a caption at the bottom. If you look at that slide, in the red, I had said earlier, is the areas of those that are the CARES passings that we partnered with the city. In the purplish-looking area, those are the Vatti areas that we won through the Vatti grant. And then the areas highlighted in green are the Ardorff areas. So if you take all the areas highlighted in green, yellow, red, and there's some yellow that you will see in there, if you can make it out, those yellow areas is our current existing footprint. So at the completion of all the projects, we're safe to say that we're going to end up with universal service here in the city of Suffolk.
So obviously, we've given you guys a lot of information tonight, and we wanted to consolidate all of it into one place where you can go back and look and get some more information for our citizens as well as our council members. So on December 7th, we debuted our broadband initiatives website. On the website, you'll find an array of information specifically on these three projects that we have running, and there'll be summaries and maps and supporting documents that you've seen in this presentation, as well as other information that you have not seen in the presentation. You'll also find on the website some frequently asked questions section, where there's things that address anything from the funding of citizens who may have a difficult time affording broadband, and what programs Charter has, as well as the federal government. Also, citizens can go onto this website and find out which one of our projects their residence lies in. And there will also be some additional information on how citizens who don't currently have our services in these rural, or don't currently have Charter services in these rural areas can stream our meetings, because you have to have the channel in order to watch it live, but you can also go onto YouTube. There's links and all that information on the city's website, which is right here, Suffolkva.us/broadband. And this webpage will be updated regularly, so citizens should, citizens and yourselves should go back often and check to see what kind of new updates we've brought for you guys.
With that, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, any questions you may have. Staff is available at this time.
Just one question, Rand, if I could. On the website, with the broadband, is it also on the main webpage we have for the city? Will that be able to link over to that broadband, or will it be a hot link on there to take us to the broadband?
There is a hot link on there, on the main page. You just have to scroll down to that. I can't exactly remember which thing it's under, but there is a hot link right there on the main page.
Great. Of course, it's, this is all just great news for our city, because with the money that just came in and the other two grants that are working, and it appears that we've ramped up really well and got the first phase really going strong here. Maybe down the line, not too far down the line, we'll have good connectivity around some areas that really have struggled to have anything at all. So maybe later next year, maybe we might get lucky to have a little more. And I see the engineer shaking his head over there. Yep, so I'm glad to hear that, and it's a good news story for everyone, particularly in the rural areas of Suffolk, to have that opportunity. They're going to have this coming. What a great thing. Thank you for all your work, for all the team's work to put this together. It's really appreciated. Thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? Councilman Johnson?
I've got one, Rand. I'm sorry I was late. 58 kind of caught me again. Who is this Suffolk? I'm getting phone calls already. You guys are doing a great job, and we're moving down the roads really quickly. But I'm getting phone calls already from people that have issues. Who is the Suffolk liaison, the person that needs to be contacted to deal with all of that?
Well, I guess it would depend on the type of issue that...
More like cutting lines and just typical right-of-way issues, all of these things. Did I miss that? Was it said, and I just missed it?
No, not at all. So I'll let Eric speak to that.
Typically, what we have is if a customer has a cut line, they can reach out to the project manager, which is Mike French, and we can provide his information.
Okay, if I could get his information, that would be helpful.
Yes, Ms. Rand has that.
Okay, and any, because anytime you see a project like this move so quickly, that's, of course, there's going to be issues.
Absolutely.
And we want to keep it positive.
It's hard to avoid, too.
Right, and the other issues we're getting, I'm getting, I'm from the Holy Neck Borough, where all of this is going on, which is a great thing, is the areas that we're bypassing right now, that are going to come in later. We're still getting, like, off Loomis Road, or going on to, sure, I can't even call all the roads right now, but we need a person that will deal with all of these things as people call in. And that's Mike, as well, as when they might be up and running for those areas as well.
For the areas...
Well, people get a little ticked off when they see everybody on the road getting hooked up, but yet, you're not going to hook my house up because I'm one house over, and those kind of things.
Yeah, it's going to depend upon, when you're looking at construction and you're doing it, unfortunately, there's some streets that were left out of the CARES project that will roll into the Vatti grant area. So, and it very well could be right there in the middle of an Ardorff area. So it's only going to determine at that address whether it was included in the CARES project or not.
Right, okay. And that's my main concern, is just to have one person, a contact person, that everybody can go to and say, okay, thank you.
That's great.
Can give the answers, okay.
Yeah, and we should, probably some of that information might be on the portal, I'm not sure, but residents should be able to look and at least contact the city, because they, you know, we're trying to provide those areas that we're addressing first, with those CARES area addresses, plus those Vatti area addresses.
Very good. Well, we're excited. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, I wanted to, I know you said Holy Neck, but what other community? Wellerville is getting this here? Chukata, I mean, who else is getting this?
Wellerville is involved in that, yes.
Who else?
Wellerville, and there's parts of Goblin areas as well, that are involved in the CARES Act that don't have services currently.
So will we get that information, who, what communities are getting involved in it? Will we be able to get it?
Yeah, 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 and it is available on the website as well. That information is available, and we can put together whatever Al would like us to put together for you guys.
Councilman, of course, we have CARES Act, we have Vatti, and we have Ardorff, and when that's all completed, all the areas will be addressed, if that's your question.
And what you, and tell me about this 357. What is that? Is it the homes or...
That was a number of what they call passings or home connections that they had under the CARES Act. Now, when we go full board on the other two, we're up around almost 4,000 to 5,000.
That's great.
4,400.
4,400. Okay, thank you.
And to, Mr. Johnson, to address what you were asking earlier, my phone number is listed on the broadband website, so if there are any citizens who need any, who I can assist, they're more than welcome to call me. I've actually spoken to quite a few citizens in the last few days and kind of allayed their concerns, so, yeah.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, I would like to say that the, this is great news. I mean, this is great news to know that, especially the people in the Holy Neck, Holland area and Wellerville area, something that we've been looking for and expecting to get some good news, and this is great news. I've gotten several phone calls from Pittman Town and those areas about people, they've noticed your crew, town poles, and, I mean, they are excited. I mean, people are excited, so they're looking forward to finally having some broadband connection out in the rural area. Keep up the good work. Thank you, thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? Eric, Rand, thank you very much for your presentation, and I usually, I can't agree with Councilman Fawcett, as he said, this is good news. This is very good news. I mean, it really is. I mean, we've talked about it, I'm not sure everybody understands exactly the impact of what these funds are going to do and what it's going to allow us to do. And to put it into perspective, I was at Wellerville for Councilman Williams' first town hall meeting, and broadband came up, and the manager was there also, and the question was, well, when are we going to get it? And basically, we told folks what they needed to hear, not what they wanted to hear, and we didn't, we didn't have a date. But the only thing we could promise is that we were trying to take advantage of every single opportunity we had, whether it was local, state, federal, Vatties, Ardorffs, CARES Act money. I want to commend, I know Rand has spent a lot of time on it, as well as IT and the other staff in putting these Vatti grants together, and now we're actually able to come back with some concrete, concrete, thank you for your efforts, concrete timeframe, to the extent that, hey, it's here and it's happening. So I appreciate all our citizens' patience, and I appreciate the work of staff, the City Manager, IT Department, and everybody who is involved, Charter, everyone who is involved in putting this together. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next topic on our work session is the presentation of the fiscal year 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Tealyn Hanson, Director of Finance, will begin the FY21 CAFRA presentation, will be followed by our representative from Cherry, Becker, the city's auditors. Tealyn?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Not sure my microphone's on. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. I have good news as well. It's not quite as exciting as universal broadband, but it's important to me. So I am here and very excited to present to you the Fiscal Year 21 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That may look a little different from a name change. Our standard-setting body changed the name and flipped some of the words around. It used to, it used to read comprehensive annual, and now it's annual comprehensive. So it's a change that we are all trying to get used to. With that, I will go ahead and get started. So as you're aware, we have an annual audit process that we go through, the end result of which is the book that you have in front of you, and it takes months and months and lots of time on a lot of people's part to put this together, and I'll take just a moment to thank everybody in the city who had anything, and our auditors who contributed to putting this all together. It is quite the effort, and it's, I will sleep a whole lot better tonight now that it's done, I can assure you. Within the book, you've got the audited financial statements and related notes and schedules with all of the financial information for the city as a whole, including the school district. You've got an opinion on the presentation of the audited financial statements, and that is the letters that come from our auditor. In just a moment, I'll have our auditor, Rob Churchman, come up here and give you the results of their audit. You also have, so with all of that said, the city had a very good year in fiscal year 21. We had, we achieved a surplus of revenues over expenditures due in large part to better-than-expected revenues when we planned the budget out, say, 18 months ago. But in addition, we also had less expenditures than we had anticipated in achieving some savings, and so we did have a surplus, and I'll go over what we do with that in just a moment. It is notable this year, there's a little bit of a change. Normally, in the very back of that book, you have what we call a compliance section that talks about our compliance with our federal grant requirements. That will be issued separately in the upcoming weeks as a separate standalone report, due to some timing issues with some information that was delayed in coming out of the federal government and the inability to process that quickly enough to turn around and put that section in this book. It's not a problem. It's not going to cause any delays or any deadlines or anything like that to be missed. It's just not going to be part of this book, and that will be issued separately within the coming weeks. With that, I want to talk about the surplus fund balance, the surplus revenues over expenditures as it relates to the new fund balance that, policy that City Council adopted several months ago. So if you'll remember, around August, the middle of August, City Council adopted a new set of financial policies where we capped the unassigned fund balance at 20% of the budgeted revenues, and then laid out a strategy of what we're going to do when we have surpluses over and above that. The strategy being there's that waterfall concept that we talked about several months ago. So first and foremost, we're going to set aside $500,000 to deal with some one-time issues. issues. You will see that come before you for your appropriation in the, probably in mid-January, but we have set aside that $500,000. Then, once we get through that step, then we take a look at the remaining surplus. First and foremost, I want to say, we make sure that, that we have the 20% unassigned fund balance as required by policy. Then after the $500,000, then we take a look at it, and we take 50%, up to 50% of the remaining surplus and put it in a budget stabilization fund until that fund reaches 2.5% of our budgeted revenues. And then the remaining 50% or whatever's left over will go to a capital, to, into a capital reserve fund to be used in the future for capital projects and cash-funded capital. With all that being said, we, coming into fiscal year 21, our unassigned fund balance was at 86.3 million. When you apply the policy percentages, the required amount that we need to meet the 20% cap is 81 million, so we have a little bit extra already that we can apply to this waterfall, and then we ended fiscal year 21 with an $11.8 million surplus. What that means then is that we have set aside the $500,000 for the one-time purchases, and we will come back in January with an ordinance asking for your appropriation of those and what, what the intended purpose is. We have been able to set up the, we of course are meeting the 20% unassigned fund balance policy, we've been able to set up the budget stabilization fund and fund it at 2%, so we've got a half a percent to deal with as we go into fiscal year 22, but that was known and understood when we set the policies that we weren't necessarily going to achieve that all in the first year. The remaining, about $10.7 million, has gone to the capital reserve fund, and when I come back to you in the early spring, late winter, to talk about CIP, you're going to hear what our plans are to do and how to handle with some of that capital reserve fund with the projects that are upcoming. So you'll hear more, more about the capital reserve fund as we move into the CIP process, because while I'm going to sleep well tonight, I don't get to rest for very long. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Barring any questions, I will introduce Rob Churchman, our partner with Cherry Becker, our audit firm, and he'll come up and give the results of his audit.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hanson. Does anyone have any questions for, for Ms. Hanson at this time? There you go, thank you very much. Hey, Rob. Good afternoon.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, members of management. This is a great time of year. I get to come in front of my clients, and they've been good and not naughty, and say, this is the most wonderful time of the year, just like, just like the phrase. I'm here to present to you, for those of you who have been part of this process in the past or maybe part of this process at another organization, there are audit standards that require certain communications to those, from the auditor to the auditee at the end of each audit, to those who are charged with governance. The required communications are set in stone by, by the body, not for a separate set for governments and a separate set for corporate, separate set for this or that. So some of the communication I'm going to go through, as you've heard from me in the past, Mr. Duman, there are some that aren't really applicable to a government, per se, but I have to positively affirm them to you each year. I'll be brief, because I know you have a full agenda, and you have meetings throughout, at six o'clock also, but these communications, you're going to say, Rob, you say the same thing to us each year. Well, one thing is positive, you have a great finance department, and your numbers are put together excellently each year, so I have good tidings, good, good results to say there. But these required communications, they assume also that you may not have been part of this process in the early part of the process, early order of the audit, and so I have to go through what our engagement services are, what our, what our results were, and then some required communications again, and then at the very last couple of slides I have for, just for, for people like Ms. Hanson and myself who live and breathe governmental accounting, there's a couple of changes that are coming down the pike that are going to modify some of your, could modify some of your recordings and some of your disclosure that you have in the statements, if you have those particular type of transactions. I'll be brief on those. Our engagement services, you've hired us in procurement, competitive procurement, to audit your financial statements for the year ended 6/30/21. Now, that includes the city. The schools are what we call a component unit, basically, if you want to think of a corporation, they're a subsidiary for reporting purposes, and so they're included in your statements also. The Economic Development Authority is like the schools, they're included in your statements also. And we're also procured to do WTWA for ease of procurement. They're not included in your, in your statements, but obviously, you have, you have a relationship with them funding-wise and so forth. We also, because of the nature of your, of your funding, we're required to do testing under certain other standards, government auditing standards, which is referred to commonly as a yellow book, if you've heard that phrase before, and then also the federal standards for your programs. That's, in the old days, I was referred to as a single audit, it's, the terminology's changed, we call it a uniform grant guidance, but it's really the same thing, testing your, your compliance on certain programs with the requirements that are, that the grant has for that. And then finally, on this page, there are requirements that the state puts out. The Commonwealth of Virginia has specifications for cities, towns, and counties, and also for authorities, boards, and commissions. So I have to go in and audit compliance of certain areas, areas like they have, they have requirements over social services, they have requirements over budgets, debt, cash, and so forth, and report to you whether or not I have found any compliance matters each year. Drilling down under the Commonwealth a little bit more, there are some requirements from the state auditors, but also other entities in the state. You don't have it, for, for example, there are some requirements for landfills, you don't have that anymore, but there are requirements for me to test the comparative cost report, which is a report that the state puts together, and the intent is to have apples in and apples out of every entity in Virginia. So City A will put their numbers in, City B put their numbers in, we're required as an auditor to test to make sure those numbers are going into the right buckets, so that when the report is compiled, you can compare yourself to City A and City B, or County C and County D. That's the intent. And so we're required to do some steps to make sure that those numbers make sense in relation to the overall annual comprehensive financial report. We're also required to do some limited procedures over internal controls of the Sheriff's Department. And then finally, unfortunately, from an audit perspective and also from, from financial management perspective, we were hoping this would, this would go away, but it still hasn't gone away, we're required each year to test the census data that's sent to the Virginia retirement system. The premise there being, as I'd said for the very first bullet, apples and apples, good in, therefore, good out. So the actuaries are getting good information, so they can run their reports and give you back good information on your actuarial determined liabilities. Now, the slide you want to hear about, the most important slide here, the results. We issued a unmodified opinion on the financial statements, and what that means is we found that the statements in all material respects are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The audit report you want to get from your auditor, the, you take it home, and if you're in first grade, take it home and put it on the refrigerator, like I used to. Also, the second bullet there is related to financial statements, we're required to let you know if we had any deficiencies come up that would be reportable to you under the government auditing standards, so that again is unmodified. As Ms. Hanson mentioned, the federal work and the Virginia work are tied together in that they're, they're usually audited together. That work has been delayed, and as she very eloquently stated, the federal government in its infinite, well, common practice, they have to give out to us each year as an auditor steps they want us to do as an auditor across the nation. So I'm doing the same steps as somebody's doing in California for the same grant. Well, because of CARES and ARP and so forth, the feds came out in July and said, here's, here's your document for the, for the current year, go start working. And then they came out and they said, oh, by the way, it's not completely done yet, we're going to give you some updates. And the updates were going to come, quote-unquote, "in the fall." Well, September passed, October passed, November passed, and then on a sleepy Friday afternoon, the 3rd of December, they released it without any fanfare. So as an industry, both myself, I count myself as an auditor and also auditees, we're trying to understand any changes that are in there that need to be implemented and need to be tested. So we're working with, with Ms. Hanson to make sure we get that worked out. Any work that was not related or not expected to be covered by this, these updates, we've already worked on. So this is a matter of us trying to take that work already done, see what the updates, if the updates impacted anything, and if they did, make sure we do those steps and get, and get the work processed and done. With regards to the last two bullets on that first section, with regards to VRS census data and the sheriff's report, we had no findings to report. Again, the report you want to have from your auditor. The bottom half there, it's basically related to government auditing standards, and I want to let you know that we didn't notice any deficiencies that would need to be reported under the standards to you. I have clients where this particular slide is two or three pages long, because I have deficiencies to report. The fact that this is one bullet point sentence that I, that I use should give you, should make you proud, that your finance department and all, all throughout the city in the financial, financial-related matters is doing the job well, and we didn't have any findings to report. Those are related to the actual CAFR book that, oh, I said it again, ACFR, we're still getting used to putting the A first. These next couple of pages are bullet point section areas that, again, the standards require, I have to talk to you about each year, even if it's not applicable, and I'll tell you that there's a couple that aren't applicable, but I have to positively tell you they're not applicable, so you don't assume that I just skipped over it for, for one reason or another. With regard to accounting policies, the standards know that you don't work here 24/7, that you don't sit upstairs in finance and watch how everything happens every day and what decisions are made. So they asked me to, to let you know if I'm aware of any material changes in policies over financial reporting and so forth each year. I'm not aware of any during the year. There was a change that was created by the Government Audit Standards Boards, the people that, that say what GAAP is, and they required the presentation, a different presentation for some of your fiduciary funds, really with yourselves, it's at schools, the school activity funds are now reported in a different part of the financial statements than they were last time. They're not recorded differently, they're just reported separately, differently than they were last time. And that's, that's not just Cherry Becker, that's everybody, all accounting firms and all audit clients had to implement that procedure this year. With regards to estimates and judgments, unless it's the most simplified lemonade stand, every set of statements are going to have some kind of estimate in it. You just can't have a check for everything, you can't have a receipt for everything, you can't have a confirmation for everything. The common areas that you have are what you would see at your peers, allowance for taxes, are you going to collect everything? Actuarial science calculations, pensions, other post-employment benefits, self-insurance and so forth. What we're required to do under the standards is to look at those estimates, make sure they make, you know, quote-unquote, "sense." Are they comparable with prior years? If they've changed, why did they change? Are they comparable with your peers? Are you doing something at a level estimate that is totally different than what all the rest of the people around you are? And, and there's no reason why you should be doing that. So we need to look at that and tell you whether or not they are reasonable, appear fairly presented, appear comparable and so forth, and they do from, from all accounts that we've had during the year. This is, this is one area that can be dramatically different from government versus corporate. In the corporate area, estimates can be utilized to modify and play, quote-unquote, "work to a certain bottom line," and therefore get your net income to a level you want it to be, or, or to a lower level, so you're paying less taxes and so forth. So this is an area where governments don't generally have that incentive to manipulate, for lack of a better term, estimates to, to get a greater, a greater result. It is one more that is more common in corporate America. With regards to audit adjustments and misstatements, I'd be required to let you know, unless something is just clearly trivial, whether or not we had any adjustments to the general ledger that was provided to us for audit and what those were for. It's not uncommon to have an adjustment here and there at a client, but here, this year, as I've said in the past, we had no proposed adjustments that we thought were necessary to make the statements fairly presented in all material respects. Again, another testament to finance's great work. These last two bullets on this page look ominous, and this is an area where I said earlier, these are standard boilerplate areas, standard topics of discussion that I have to tell you, even if they're not applicable. We had no disagreements with management over reporting, auditing, so forth. We had no difficulties, significant difficulties encountered based on doing our audit. I have clients, and I've been in the newspaper with clients, where this particular slide has been three or four pages long, because I have to tell you the good and the bad. Here, it's all good, there's no, no disagreements or no difficulties in performing the audit. Material client communications, this is a required, there's a required piece of evidence in the audit standards that says the auditee has to basically own up and represent to the auditor certain things. And they're, frankly, they're very much boilerplate across the audit industry. There are things like, they're your financial statements, they assert that they're the city's financial statements. They're not my financial statements. I'll give you four to six pages of paper and a lot of hard work and sweat, but they're your statements. They represent to me that, they've told me about all litigation I need to know about, any federal or state monitoring results, reports, negative reports or positive reports, things like that. Things that if, if an entity wanted to come to me and say, Rob, I, I, all these 40 items are great, but really, can we take out 36? I don't really feel comfortable telling you, saying that, the way it's, that would give me as an auditer, pause. Why would someone have a problem asserting to me what is relatively straightforward and industry standard? Is there something I don't know that would impact my opinion on the financial statement? Something that could impact an accrual or disclosure and so forth? So here, I'm required again under the standards to let you know that nothing to that came, came to light here. Finance understood, represented to us all the representations without pause that we requested, and again, another testament to finance's integrity and quality of work. And the last one here is one that really, it's, again, differentiating between corporate and government. This is something I've never seen come up in government, I've been doing this 35 years, and I, you know, between myself and all my friends, you know, collective, collective years is mind-boggling. It's more, it's more of a corporate area, but I have to, again, positively affirm to you it didn't happen. There is something in the, in the lingo of auditing called shopping the opinion, and what that means is if, if an entity, maybe a new startup, who's trying to get funding, venture capital, and so forth, a new startup wants to record something that maybe is not 100% generally accepted accounting principle, maybe it's on the fringe, so they may go to three different audit firms and say, what would, what would your opinion on this? Would you let, you know, does this make sense to you? And if, if two of them say no and one says yes, they're going to go with the one that says yes, because they're trying to shop the opinion, manipulate the numbers. And I'm required to let you know, if I've ever been aware of management doing that, and I'm not here, but again, I have to positively affirm that to you, because the standards say you can't just bypass it, Rob, and say it's not applicable. And then two more, and then I'll, I'll skip through probably the, the reporting items because you don't need to hear all that, you've got plenty of other stuff to talk about. Independence, this is as important as everything else on the first two slides. I'm not aware of anything in myself, my team members, my firm, any vendors we may deal with, any subcontractors we may deal with and so forth, that would cause us to not be independent of the city and therefore not be able to render an opinion. If I was not independent, I wouldn't be objective, and my opinion would be useless. So we have to, we have to affirm to you each year, we have steps inside our firm to make sure independence occurs, we also have steps, as we do with the audit jobs, each, each job, to make sure that it is maintained. But we are not aware of anything that would have caused our independence to be impaired, either in reality, the concept of independence is reality, but also in perception. And then other matters, there are some sections in the ACFR that don't have a full, a full strong opinion on them because the requirements aren't for that. The first section, the section I'm referring to upfront, the MDNA, that is a section that's required to be in there by generally accepted accounting principles, but it's not required for us to audit it. We do look at it, we read it, we give suggestions, subjective criticism, we make sure the numbers tick and tie and back and forth and so forth, but we do not give an opinion on it in our two-page opinion that you see in the financial statements. And then behind the footnotes, there are some supplementary information where, if you think of the financial statements as a pyramid, the top part being can really, really condense and the bottom being really spread out, the bottom part is, is what I'm talking about here, the other supplementary information. That's detailed schedules where you may have 10 or 15 funds that are combined and brought up front to be one column. So that just gives more detail what makes up that, that front column, so you can analyze what's in, you know, special revenues or what may be in enterprise funds and so forth. We make sure those numbers make sense compared to the numbers up front, but we don't audit every individual column down in the back by itself, we kind of audit them as a collective. And those are my required communications. I'd be happy to answer any questions here, or just briefly to show you two slides of what's going to be coming down the pike and then answer questions, I'm up to you, it's up to you. I defer.
I would go ahead and.
Okay, sure. There are some things coming down the pike that are going to change, that, one will definitely change your presentation of your financial statements, this, the year we're sitting in now for leases. It's going to require some additional work to make sure that all leases are being reported in the financial statements. It should not change any fund balance or net position, it's really going to cause a gross-up of, of, of an outflow and a corresponding lease and so forth. And then next year, you'll also be required to implement 89, which is basically stop capitalizing interest on construction period, that's all it is, it's not going back to fix anything, it's just say, stop doing it now, going forward, don't record it, capitalize interest anymore. My audit opinion will look different next year, the standards have changed to bring more information, they, for, for those of you who've read one before, you probably won't be surprised to hear me say that it can be confusing, and it can be kind of stale. It's, they haven't changed it since I took the CPA exam in 1989, I had to hand-write it as part of the exam, that's, so, they tried to make it more modern, more updated, trying to bring in some more information that could, that would tell people more about what, what an audit's about and what was done and how it was conducted and so forth. And that'll be a standard presentation across, across the industry. And then in '23, if you were to get yourself into a probably private partnership, that's really been guidance that was put out because GASB, again, the people that promulgate GAAP, have, have seen that people are doing this across the nation, and they're seeing it do it inconsistently, presentation-wise and so forth, so they want to get some consistency, comparability across those type of relationships. And then the last one here is talking about subscription-based, basically, everybody's getting cloudy. It's a good thing we had broadband discussion earlier. So much stuff is moving to the cloud. And so they put some guidance out there to make sure people are disclosing their cloud relationships and presenting the, the expenses and so forth related to it in a consistent manner so that, again, hopefully city A and city B, if they're in this, if they're in something that's cloud related, but maybe different cloud, they're presenting the information consistently so you can kind of compare them and see how, how things are going. And that's, would put you to sleep already, but if you have any trouble sleeping even more, just go to the website, gasb.org, hit the accept cookies, just download, especially, yeah, 87 is pretty, 87 is pretty dry, and so it'll help you get, help you get some sleep. If, if you don't use it, um, leave, even out your, your, your desk chair, your, your desk leg.
Rob, thank you very much. Counsel, any questions or comments from either Rob or Teal? Oh, quiet, well, I guess I've got the only question. You go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just had one question. I see that you were part of the school audit as well?
Yes, the schools are, the schools are showing what we call in our vernacular a component unit, but you want to think of like a subsidiary of a, of a corporation that are included in the, in the presentation. Yes, sir.
Okay, so therefore you all do the same audit for the schools that you do for.
We go, we go over there and look at their fixed assets and we look at their payroll, payroll, you know, expenditures, we look at, yes, sir. And we actually, actually, under your contract, we actually also go out to, in days before COVID, we go out to actual schools and look at the activity funds. Now, a lot of it's more centralized, but we do look at the activity funds for the schools, for example, the clubs, the money that the clubs have.
That answered my question. I've had quite a few comments being made about the audit of the schools, and I just want to make sure that we were following the same guidelines as the others.
Yes, sir. If you look up front on exhibit one and two, you'll see schools has its own column and its own row. And then if you go in the, if you go in the footnote, you'll see individual disclosures for schools on fixed assets, pensions, other, other post-employment benefits. And then if you go to the back, exhibit, memory service exhibit 41, for, for several exhibits, has school-specific information.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. This might be for Ms. Teal, Ms. Hanson. You said earlier that we had a surplus and you tell us later what the surplus was, I don't, I'm, I'm going through here trying to decipher it in a quick, quick thing. What do we look like?
The surplus was on the, the one slide where I showed you where we were doing with the waterfall, we had an $11.8 million surplus this year.
Just wanted to confirm that. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I'll close it out. Once again, we had some really good news prior to this, now we had some really good news again. So it's, as I used to say, it's a good time to be in Suffolk, for sure. I'm glad the Vice Mayor brought it up about the school system audit. We have, I mean, I've received a lot of comments and questions and when I'm looking at this document, I see a pretty big document here. And Teal, great work. But from an auditor's standpoint, I see five pages devoted to the school system out of this entire document right here. So to the extent that you're doing your audit, which I assume is a, I don't know, we've got different depths of audit, I guess there was, and we're looking for any irregularities or what have you, but for the public that wants more information in regards to what goes into these accounts, what comes out of these accounts, where is that information available? I know these are, this is, I don't know what you call it, it's kind of more of a balance sheet than it is an audit to me, as far as accounts, what came in, what went out in their entirety, but is there some way, somewhere to obtain additional information if our citizens wanted it, similar to what we provide in ours?
So the schools does not write their own book like we do, but all of their information is contained in that book, same as ours. So if you go through the note disclosures, you look at what our cash balances are for the city, there's a column in there for what the cash balances are for the schools. You look at our receivables, same thing, there's columns in there for the schools. So it's not entirely accurate to say there's only five pages in that book dedicated to the schools, because throughout these 60-some pages of notes, all of the school's information is rolled into that right alongside the cities. And so for everything that we're required to disclose for the city, we have also disclosed for the schools. To answer the second part of your question, well, and, and I will say, they, their audit is exactly the same and as in-depth as ours. So Rob and his staff members do the same, same audit procedures that they do here for the city, they do at the schools. It's, it's the same full-fledged audit. Their opinion is rolled in with our opinion because they are a component unit of ours. But that book is, is not equally split, but all of the required information and detailed information that we show for the cities is also shown for the schools throughout the notes and in their own set of financial statements. The, to answer the second part of your question, where can someone go and get more detailed of ins and outs, that's going to have to be gotten from the school district itself. Same with the city, we, you know, our detailed ins and outs and all the transactions that we do isn't in that book. The book would be thousands of pages long if we were to put in all of the transactional information that we do on an individual transaction by transaction basis. That information is certainly available via FOIA, same with the schools. Detailed transactional level information can be gotten from the school's finance department, the same as it would be gotten from our finance department. But, but that book contains all of the same information for the schools that it does for the city.
Okay, so if any of our citizens want more information either on ours or the school systems, they have to, they have the ability to FOIA that if they wanted to break down on individual accounts and transactions?
Of course.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to clarify that.
We'll add also, not to, not to belabor, but there is also what is published each year by September 30th called the Annual School Report. Every jurisdiction in Virginia has to publish that with the Department of Education. That is very detailed disclosure or discussion of individual, not individual transaction, but areas of expenditures and so forth. So if a citizen wanted to, you know, get that from the Virginia DOE, that would be something that would be more detailed than what's in there and give more, more information.
That's filed by the school system with the Department of Education at the state level.
And it's a further breakdown of the actual.
It's going to have line item, it, it won't have transactional detail, but it'll have line items like how much they spend on salaries, how much they spend on supplies. It's not going to be broken down by school, it's the school district as a whole.
But it's more detailed than what's provided in the audit?
Yes, sir.
That we're doing here, and it's called the Annual School Report?
Annual School Report, yes, sir.
And that goes through the?
Virginia Department of Education.
Goes directly to the state?
That is through the Virginia Department of Education.
Do you know if that particular report is posted on the school website?
I don't know.
I have not looked.
I mean, I don't know, just asking.
We get it from them directly when we look at it.
I, I don't know what their requirements are as it relates to that, that's something that, that the school district files outside of, of ours. If it's anything like our APA transmittal, it's posted on the website of the state, at the Department of Education website.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it once again. Putting this thing together every year, I can only imagine, kudos to you and your staff. Rob, keep, I guess you, you don't make the news, you're just delivering it, and so I appreciate Teal and the manager and everybody else making the news, and Rob, I appreciate you reporting it.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next item on our work section is a compensation plan update. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. In regards to my discussions with city council over the past week, staff has continued to work with our consultant Evergreen towards developing and completing the new employee compensation plan for the city. Last spring, city council requested the proposed compensation plan by the end of this month and to provide the city council costs associated with the plan and a recommended funding of the plan. As I provided to you over the past week, there remains additional work to be completed to ensure the proposed plan is competitive. As you may be aware, the city of Chesapeake yesterday adopted an updated compensation plan for their public safety staff. This data is also important consideration to the compensation of cities or the completion of the city's compensation study. Now, the filing presentation will give you a brief status on the proposed plan, where we're at today and where we're headed. As we look at this slide, there's five different areas there. And as we talk about the public safety market analysis, and this is for our public safety folks, it is complete, but we want to go back and look at what Chesapeake has adopted. The key to that is, we know where they, cities are or where they were, but we want to make sure where they're going. As it relates to the general employees' market analysis, it's in process. We expect all our data to be delivered by late, well, really the week of December 20th. We've had some difficulties in receiving the general population data, you know, well as market shifts in there, but we expect to have everything this coming week, and so we can start working that framework. The framework is actually being developed, but we need to slot. The financial analysis, as the data comes in, we continue our analysis on what to be done with, on the cost, what it's going to be as we finish up here and what we propose. As we talk about, again, I mentioned the plan, the design work. Of course, we are talking about step plans up to the position of director. A designer's step plan has been completed for public safety. The initial framework, of course, we continue to critique, and it's also being reviewed by department heads at this time. The general employee step plan design is in progress, is awaiting completion of market data. Sliding of the general employees within the step plan and departmental reviews, we hope that, we will have done by the end of January, along with discussions at that point. As we move forward, city council's consideration and potential adoption of the new compensation plan is scheduled for the first, for your review, the first meeting in February, which is February 2nd. In addition to the compensation money, we looked at benefits, and we took data from the USI, and based on staff reports, our compensation plans are comparable to other communities. And basically, based on our designs, our employee rates are somewhat lower. That is the status report. I want to say to employees, bear with us, we're working, where this is not a delay tactic, as has been mentioned to me, but just work with us, we want to get this right, we want to have it right for the employees, and from that, I'll be open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Manager. Councilman Fossett?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, appreciate the information you just provided. Along with the compensation study, would this be coming in around the first part of February, February 6th, February 2nd meeting? Do you anticipate that this would retroactive back to January 1st of this year, coming up in 2020?
We would like to do that. I need to look at what the data tells us at the end, so I can bring you a solid recommendation on that, sir, but I would hope we would be, could look at and implement something retroactive.
And, and also you feel very firmly that we should have this package in front of us on February 2nd to do an action on?
I've asked that question of my team and of myself several times over the past week, and I've given you that date. And I'd hoped, of course, I know the next question is, well, you thought you could have it on December 30th, but we are, we're committed to the first meeting in February.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager and staff, I know you have been working very hard on this, and I know you wanted, I think you wanted, I know you wanted to do it right and get the numbers right before we come out and then have to go back and redo something that was not correct. I know timelines is tight, and when you put numbers out there, a date out there, people look to that date to, to happen. So I think when you did that, that sort of put you in a box, where again, that now you got to step back out of the box a little bit and come back. So with this study, I'm saying with what other areas are doing, just like you say about Chesapeake last night, what they did for their public safety people and all, we need to make sure that we are coming up with the right numbers and being compatible with the other areas of what they are doing, so that we will stay in line with what is taking place in other areas. And we won't have to come back a year from now and go back through the same thing over again. So I, you've given us another date on February 2nd, so we're putting that on the calendar, but if it's not that date, don't tell us that and it's not right.
I've asked, we've looked and I've been assured that we're good on the first meeting in February. So I've written to put it out there again, if I didn't have some confidence on that from what we've been discussing as a team. Of course, we're going to look at the Chesapeake, what they've adopted. We also got to look at what it means financially as we roll it into our balancing with ours. So of course, I need to bring you back both ends of the equation, the plan and affordability of the plan. So I just want to.
Yeah, and I think that's going to be a big, big part of it, because I was looking at the news again last night, they eliminated recycling in order to help fund some of this. So I mean, all this come into play of the funding as well, so that's what I'm saying. I want to make sure that we have the time to get, get it right. So when we do it, it's going to be done right, okay? Thank you.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I've heard everything, you know, that's been said, and I appreciate the effort everyone's made, but council did give a, a request that it be done by the end of the year, and we were told that it would just about be done then, and obviously it's not. I'd kind of like to have an idea of what might have caused us not to get there. Is it Evergreen not performing, or was it something else that I'm missing? I'd like to get a feel for what that was, maybe.
Well, in, in working with the team, a lot of it is a receipt of data and the willingness to have that data sent to us by other municipalities for our comparison. You got, several municipalities were undergoing, are still undergoing pay studies as we talk here today. So releasing data is, my understanding, was somewhat of a, a challenge, and we still haven't received all that, that's why we're still working on the general employees' step plan. But I would say that's part of the equation.
Okay. I would hope that we're going to make sure the employees understand and get a word out to them that, you know, this is a delay that, and we are all looking to have this being retroactive back to January, so that they know the plan is really working and we're not just passing, just sort of passing them down the road and not going to step up to the plate.
It's not our intent to pass anything down the road or, or to delay anything for our employees. We all depend on our employees, we need to.
Yes, sir.
Ensure they're taken care of. You know, I'd hope that, you know, I'd be sitting here showing you what those step plans look like in entirety today. Unfortunately, I can't. But it's not to defer anything, it's not on any other reason, just only to get it right and to have the data correct.
All right, I thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Ward?
I just want to ask this question because why senses, you made a statement saying stonewall, did you make a statement like that, or you hesitating or something?
Well.
You made a statement, you made a statement, I just wanted.
Yeah, well, there's.
I wanted, and you said that, that, what that mean to me? I just wanted, you made a statement, what statement you made?
Well, well, what I'm trying to say is we're not putting this off for any other reason other than to get it right. We want to make sure it's right. We've, statements have been made to me that there's an impression that we are just casting it down the road, not really serious. And what I'm saying is we are serious, and we want to get this done right.
Okay, that's what I got it right then, is what I'm trying to say, I'm trying to figure out, like you're doing on purpose or something. And I'm sorry, no, well, let me finish. And I'm sorry that, that the impression you have, that's, I mean, we think you're doing this on purpose. I don't, I hope it ain't coming from the council, I'm just saying, because when you made the statements, it made me feel like, you know, this is so much emergency. I understand everything take time, and, and this has like been going on for a while, as I can recall. But for you to feel that, that bothers me. I mean, for you to be pushed like that, and I had to agree with Council Vice Mayor Bennett is that, let's do it right, so that means that we don't have to go back over anything. So I hope that that type of pressure is not on you and your staff, and the most important thing is, is we doing it, let's do it right. And I have to hope that, that bothered me when you said that, because I'm looking like, okay, you're doing it, we got that, understand, but you can say a date and sometimes things come up, you can't project what's going to happen. So I'm, you know, I might be stepping on toes already, but I'm just saying, for you to feel that you got to be rushed to satisfy and not be right, I got a problem with that. So like I said, I'd agree with Vice Mayor Bennett said, do it right the first time, so then that means. So then that means that we don't have to go back over it and it's fair to everybody. Thank you.
Councilman, let me clarify my statement. I wasn't directing at anyone in this room. It's just, I, that statement has been made to me in passing that there's a feel that that may, may be the reason, but I, that wasn't directed at anyone in here and I, I apologize if?
I like getting you say the feel. I'm just saying, you know, I interpret that, you said, they did say you said dates and I understand that. I got that correct. I got that right. But sometimes dates can be changed. I'm just saying being right is more important than the date you said. So you keep, if you're doing it, I don't see what more we can ask for than ask for it to be right. And that's my opinion. That's not nobody else's opinion. That's my opinion and I got a way of saying things that I think I feel comfortable with it.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, I've got some final comments. First and foremost, I want all our employees to realize that we value their service. We're, we are indeed fortunate to have the employees working for us, dedicated employees working for us that we have. And myself, the manager, and I believe everyone on this council is desirous of them to be compensated accordingly. We need to remain competitive. We need to be able to attract and retain quality employees. We have the same issues that the other localities do. This is not a minor step. I mean, we've been talking about step plans for four, five, six years at least. Everybody's up here shaking their head. Well, we put this initiative in about six months ago. So let's put everything into perspective. There's been more accomplished by this HR director and by this city manager that has been accomplished in the last five or six years since this first guy brought up. So let's just put it all into perspective. Let's take into consideration that Chesapeake is the only other Hampton Roads locality that I know of that's considering a step plan. And they started this process five or six months before we did and they just came out with it. I can tell you through the conversations that I've had with the manager and through our HR director that they have been working diligently, continuously, and any other adjective or adverb you want to put into it, short of having ruby slippers or Wonder Wand and making it happen, they've been trying to get the job done. So let's put everything into perspective. We can ask for anything we want. This council can ask for anything we want. We can request anything we want. But the individuals that have to deal with the reality are employees. And then we have to have the resources to be able to fund whatever it is that we come up with. Now, I've already heard, you know, folks hear what they want to hear. Now, I've already heard tonight, well, we're going to try to make it retroactive. Let's not forget the three-letter word, try. It's all dependent on resources. We have ample resources, but we don't have unlimited resources. Pay raises are reoccurring expenses. They can't be satisfied with one-time funds. So whether we have a little surplus now or we don't have a little surplus now, the matter becomes how are we going to fund a recurring expense with recurring income? I will not sit here and not say anything if anybody's inferring that they've been misled, lied to, or this process has been intentionally delayed because I know better. It absolutely has not. There are certain people in this room that have all asleep trying to put this together, not to mention the fact that this isn't the only thing that everybody's doing every day. We have a lot of employees, a lot of citizens, and a lot of tasks that have to be accomplished. We didn't throw everything on the shelf so we could get this compensation study done. That's just the reality of it because we can't. But personally, I am satisfied with where we are right now. I am confident, cautiously optimistic, that we will be able to put together a satisfactory plan, that we will be able to fund with it, fund that plan simply because our city is in a good position right now and our economic outlook is going to continue to be good. And I hope we can be more than competitive with funding our employees with the compensation that they justly deserve. So with that, that's all I got. I appreciate the presentation. You know exactly where we are in the process. That is the last item for open session and I understand we do have a motion for a closed session. Madam Clerk, if you will read that for consideration.
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one-A-eight and A-one, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal advice, specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel and the discussion, consideration, or interviews with prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city. Specifically, the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the community policy and management team, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, the Fine Arts Commission, the Historic Landmarks Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, the Sister Cities Commission, the Southeastern Public Service Authority, the Planning Council, Tadwater Youth Services, and Western Tadwater Community Services Board.
Counsel? Councilman Fossett? Councilman Fossett, motion for approval. Councilman Williams?
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams. Any discussion in the motion? Here it is, none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember LaBarlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Duman?
Yes.
The motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Concludes our work session and we will reconvene at six PM.